Well, sure, I'll use a good pen. We're live, okay. Thanks Kathleen, and we're already recording, right? Okay. All right, now we're going to move on to the work session. First up, for the proposed regular agenda, December 21st, 2020, is a public hearing, consideration of application for funding through the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant. Career Link Employment Transportation Funding Program for Hope Haven. Who's taking that one?
Who probably want to?
Yeah, go ahead and unmute him. Oh, Zach would be probably presenting. Zach, we're going to unmute you, and you can give us the presentation, okay?
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
How was it, brother?
Good.
Good.
So, we have on here a resolution to approve an application for a community development block grant program called Community Link Transportation. This is a program that's focusing on transporting individuals to employment, and Hope Haven has reached out to us about possibly applying for these funds to transport some of their clients to employment destinations throughout the region. They've just a service they've been doing for several years, and they're looking to expand. And that's what the grant fund was up until. One of the suggestions with the CBB program is that the applicant has to be a city or a county. And so that is why the application is due, and I talked to Jim for know about this a couple of months ago, if the city would be willing to be the applicant. And that was kind of a suggestion from the state, and the City of Burlington has done several CBB grants in the past, and in particular ones that are passed through grants to other entities. That's what the application for, that's what the program is. And I don't know if they made it there or not, but I know Bob Bartle and Eva Castillo were planning to come by and talk a little bit about the program.
And they're here.
They're in the room.
There.
Turn it over to them and let them talk more about the
Okay.
program itself, and kind of what they do, and what the grant will help them do. And then next week, during the public hearing, we do have a list of things we're required to cover during the meeting. So we've got a list of things that we'll go over, that include details on the application, and funding amounts, and things like that, which I can reiterate some of those now as well, but it's kind of the process. These are what we need to follow. With that, I'll turn it over to Bob and Eva.
Okay. So, I'm Bob Bartle, is with Hope Haven.
And I'm Eva Castillo, I'm the Director of the Employment Services Program at Hope Haven.
So, the program in question is something we do where we take persons with disabilities or mental illness, we place them in jobs in the community such as Hy-Vee, or motels, hotels, that sort of thing. We support them in that job until they're doing okay, and then we back our supporters out. We'll follow up if they start to struggle. And if they take a new job, we come back in and help them with that, or if they want to change jobs, we help them with that. Eva has responsibility for the program, and at any given time, we're serving a couple of hundred people, one way or another, in this program. New people come in, people receiving services kind of drop off, or their service diminishes as they get the job down, don't need support anymore. The government funds the service to a degree, but we've been subsidizing it literally for over a decade to keep it going. We see it as a core part of our mission. People want to have work, we get them to work. A part of the services just flat out are not reimbursed. And this grant, which goes over a two-year period, covers a part of the services that aren't reimbursed, which would be like driving to wherever the person lives, picking them up. Once you get there and the person's in the vehicle, it's a reimbursable service, but the time when you're getting there isn't. So, this helps us reduce a loss. It only pays half of each mile driven, but it helps a lot. So, that's kind of the gist of the grant. The money's there, it's part of their mission to fund something like this. So, it's, we didn't realize it was an opportunity for us. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, for the general idea of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Okay. Did you have anything to add?
Just that, the program's been around since 1988, serving the four counties in southeast Iowa. Here recently, you might have seen some informational stuff. We, Sunny's and West Point won an estate award. The year before that, Chase Gibb had won it. Those are all businesses in the community that are supporting these individuals getting employment and giving back to their communities. So they're working and being part of society and independence to themselves. So, it's just different stages of that, so they're all just working at different levels and getting there, and some just need a little bit more support, so.
Chase Gibb would be a local businessman, has restaurants and so on. And the awards she's speaking of are statewide awards. So of all the providers like us in the state, these businesses are recognized for their commitment to people with disabilities.
Great. Counsel, you have any questions?
Sounds like it's a great program.
Yeah, it sounds like it is a fantastic program. Jessica, is there anybody still on the line? Okay. I don't have any questions besides, it seems like a really worthwhile program, so I think you're going to get five yeses on this one.
Good.
Okay.
Good to go.
All right, thank you very much, folks, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob, thanks Eva.
Now, Zach, are you still on there?
Thanks, Eric.
Yep, Zach, are you still on?
Yeah, I'm there, I'll be back next.
Well, you're not on for resolution number three, no? Okay, thanks, Bob, thanks Eva.
No, I'm not.
Okay. Okay, that's just Nick. All right, I'm just trying to see if, I was just trying to see if we needed you. Okay, number two is a public hearing, consideration of an ord- oh, do we have, we don't have to vote on that, no. Sorry, I get my meetings mixed up. Public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 81, All-Terrain Vehicles and Snowmobiles of the Burlington Municipal Code, first reading. Are you taking that one, Major?
You didn't know it, but I didn't know it, but I guess.
Wait, I think we've been through this work process a couple of times, so I didn't know.
This is the third reading, isn't it?
No, it's the first reading, because he was working on the code.
Okay. I don't know why I thought this one was already on.
Yeah. So, I didn't know if you knew anything about that, or not?
I do not, I know Acting Chief Klein put a lot of work into it, and the ordinance that's being proposed is a solid one.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think any of us had any questions after working on that one, so. Number three is a resolution, thanks Jessica. Number three is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the State of Iowa at Southeast Iowa Regional Planning for STBG funds for improvements on Valley Street from Fifth to Front.
Yeah, so this is the state transportation block grant. It used to be called STP. We have actually been pretty lucky at getting these. We've received most of the share of the SBBG grant availability in our region for the last three years. Based on the conversation from the five-year road plan that we had back in early November, we went forward with some consensus on the Valley Street PCC paving job. As you may remember, we put in a $1.5 million PCC paving from Front Street all the way to the new section of concrete at Fifth Street. In the grant application that's before you, we went ahead and added some lighting and some other type of amenities that are going to be more typical of what you're going to see on Jefferson Street, Main Street, and then eventually Washington Street, as we have funds available for that. In the memo, you will take note that the local match that Jesse has estimated, and what we've put down is $850,000. So bringing our contribution down by essentially half, because we know what's available of STBG funds in our region, and it's about that $1.3 million. This would be a full PCC pavement from storefront to storefront with sidewalk, and then lighting, realigning curb lines and things like that. So, we can talk about this grant applica- I mean, we're talking about it now, but also talking about it in the five-year road plan. Should we go forward and submit this STBG grant application, there's no reason we couldn't dial back the project and go for a project more geared into the amount of money that we have estimated or put forth in our, in our planning, our forecasting of funds. So, we could definitely bring that back, so.
Counsel, you have any questions? Go get the money. Thanks, Nick.
Yep.
Next up is a resolution to approve a city contribution of not to exceed $170,000 to the Burlington Passing Track Relocation Project.
This would be based on the last couple of work sessions discussion. The short line was in here discussing their relationship with us and cooperating us, with us in the movement of their passing track from down between the auditorium and the port to further north, so it wouldn't have conflicts with our crossings, wouldn't negatively impact on our flood wall project, would actually save us a little money from our flood wall project. This is something that was for the short line's benefit, but they're, not necessarily on their timing. This is something that they knew would be beneficial to them long-term, but they weren't doing this except because of us. For them, this was an overall project cost of $350,000 or so?
It was $300,000.
$300,000. We had savings of right in this $170,000 area on our flood wall project bids. So, given that this was, I mean, we had, Counsel's already discussed this, and based off of the discussion last time, it was, four of you were in favor of going ahead and moving forward with compensating them that $170,000 that they saved us to, towards their costs. They were spending more than that to meet our needs. They do have a benefit, but again, they were doing it on our schedule, so.
Okay. Counsel, you have any questions? Okay, moving on. For the proposed consent agenda for December 21st, 2020, a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Did anybody see anything that was concerned? Hearing none. Number two is a resolution approving the final acceptance or release of retention monies for the 2018 Mount Pleasant Street HMA overlay project. Nick?
So this is a project that's lasted a while before, by the time of the end of completion of the project and the closeout. As you may be aware, the project took a little longer than expected, and so there were some liquidated damages conversation. They went over the working days time period. But this project, what this resolution approves, is a zero pay for final pay. We've already approved up to that amount. And then the release of retention funds of $13,272. The total as-built cost, and I'll get into the engineering part of it, was $1.645,409. So, it came in under what the bid project was. We had some quantity adjustments, and then the liquidated damages did have an effect, but we had, we had a pretty significant number of change orders on a couple of things. So, you won't see that in that change orders number, but that number would be a lot higher without the liquidated damages applied to that. We did have a memorandum of understanding for this project with the City of West Burlington, since a lot of the portion is in, or a majority of the portion is in West Burlington. The City of Burlington's total cost with this project, with engineering included, is at $201,000. City of West Burlington will contribute $267,000, and the rest of it was out of that, I think at the time, STP grant application. So, we got a pretty good project for $200,000, new roadway. So, we'll be able to close this out and bill West Burlington their portion of the project and get paid, and be able to close this account out.
Fantastic. Any questions, Counsel? No. All right, thanks Nick.
Can we back up to the last one with the, it wasn't for you, Nick, I think it was for Eric. It was the nuisance abatements. Quick question for you, Eric. So about three years ago, we changed the administrative fees on those. We structured them in order to try and encourage people to take care of these things before we get to them. Are we seeing much of an impact? Because I'm continuing to see the same names on that list over and over and over again.
Probably not an impact on those properties that they're, dare like property owners that are out of town or just have walked away from the property. I think the $100 for some people, the first time they get it, they realize they don't want to do it again. But some of the recurring ones, a lot of the recurring ones, they're properties that have just kind of walked away, or you see the former client center, or different ones where the owner's just not doing anything. Ultimately, they'll have to, if someone buys a property, it'll have to be paid. But, I don't know, it's, on some, I would say some of them it has an impact, but on a lot of the recurring ones, it does not. It's just a cost that comes back to us if it's ever repaid.
So like the one out in the park, which is a Monstrosity Building. So what's the end game on that? Since you asked a question.
That'll be a discussion, I guess, if we want to move forward with something that, it's a...
If we take it, we got to tear it down. If we got to tear it down, we got to pay for it.
$700,000 cost to demo, so. I know there had been some interest in it. Unfortunately, the current or previous owner stripped everything out of the building. It's pretty useless at this point.
Okay.
So it'd be a big cost to rehab or demo.
Okay. All right, going back to, coming right back to you, Chief. Resolution approving the Burlington Fire Department's 2020, or to 2025 Strategic Plan. Sorry to interrupt you, Chief.
That's okay. All right, well, good evening. So, I'm going to go through our 2020 to 2025 Strategic Plan. I'm not going to read it all, it's about 24 pages. I'll kind of go through the highlights, but first of all, there's a resolution of approving the plan. That's, there's no dollars attached to that, it's just saying, we approve this as a direction for the Burlington Fire Department to move forward. It's a roadmap for us. Something we're going to work on over the next five years, and then probably continue on into the future after that. And it's really about helping us pursue excellence in the fire department. And like to thank the Mayor, Councilman Rinker, Councilwoman Murray. She gave some input as well on the plan, so I appreciate that. And then all the other people down at the fire department, that we've put a lot of time and effort into this. We started actually in May of 2019, so about a year and a half, we spent working on this project. On the executive summary, the only thing I really wanted to point out there on the first page is that this is a living document. We plan on continuing to have meetings from time to time. This isn't something we're going to put up on the shelf and look at in five years and say, how did we do in the last five years? That's not what we're doing. And when we get back to the initiatives, you'll see, we've already been working on several of them. We actually have accomplished some of them, so we're already putting it into practice. But we will make changes every year. We'll cross some things off the list that we've accomplished, maybe some goals will change. But it's definitely not going to sit on the, sit on the shelf. Give a second. Maybe make this go forwards. Please, Errol, it forward. You go all the way forward to the organizational overview, yeah? All right. So I'm on the, on page six, and pretty much everybody knows the main areas that we cover as a fire department. So I'm not going to go through those, except to talk about community risk reduction. A lot of people aren't really familiar with that term. Traditionally, that's been known as the Fire Prevention Bureau of the Fire Department, but it's really grown into a lot more than just that, and it really involves more than just the fire marshal. Community risk reduction involves anything that will help reduce fire, property loss, or injuries. And so that really broadens that category, and that's a lot of what you'll see, that what we're trying to do, that's kind of what we're aimed at doing. So what were some of the things we do now? We do fire inspections, fire investigations. We pre-plan a lot of the target hazards or high-hazard buildings in Burlington. We started doing that Remembering When program a couple of years ago, targeting fire and fall prevention for elderly, specifically the fall prevention, because that's a huge, that's our number one call type in Burlington, is fall. So every month, that's the number one call. Smoke alarm installations, we've been doing that, public education. And then pretty much all the training that we, that we do is actually, that falls under community risk reduction. That's about having an effective force, an effective response to a wide variety of emergencies. On the emergency response overview, again, I hope you take some time to read every page. There's a lot of stuff, good stuff in there, especially for people in the public that aren't really familiar with what we do. That's kind of why this section's in there. I did just want to talk about this little map. A lot of people wonder how we respond to calls, or why certain ambulances respond from different stations or whatever, but we have the town divided up into three areas, using the two stations that we had, and then we added that third. Des Moines County GAS helped us divide the town into three, three areas with the best response times associated with that station. So, it was really cool, they put a lot of our historical run data in there, so they could see the actual response times from the different stations. And then they ran some theoretical modeling, looking at different road miles and the response times that we could expect from the different stations. And so that's what the, the different colors and the numbers represent the station territory. So, obviously I couldn't fit our entire county map on this, this page, but just to explain the 3-1 and the 3-2. So the first number there is the primary station. So Station 3 covers all that area in blue. So if they're in-house, not on a call, any call that pops up in that blue area, which extends way north and west from there, is, belongs to Station 3. Now if they're busy, then the next number is the station responsible. So, a lot of the territory then goes to Station 1, that little sliver there goes to Station 2. And so it's really cool how we have, all the districts are divided like that. So we get the best possible response as far as times go to those stations. Feel free to ask any questions as I'm going through here. Those of you on the committee, if you have something to throw in there, feel free to. So, the strategic planning process, there's a lot of different models out there on how to proceed with a strategic plan. Right there in the middle of the page is what we used. We reviewed our mission statement, developed a vision statement. Some people just review theirs, we didn't actually have a vision statement. So we spent a couple of meetings going over that and coming up with a vision statement, developing core values, complete a SWOT analysis, create goals and objectives, and then finally present the plan to the stakeholders, which includes the city council, citizens of Burlington, and the department members. So, I've already presented the plan to all three shifts at work. A lot of them were involved in the, in the process, presenting it to council. And then, as we can, present it to the citizens. We'd love to go out and do some presentations. I know during COVID, that's kind of hard to do. This will be up on our website for people to just look at. Probably not as good as a face-to-face meeting, but. So why did we, why do we need a plan, a strategic plan? Well, we've never, we've never had a plan. Bill L. had penned a master plan back in the early 90s, and we actually looked at that, I think our first meeting. And it was, and it was good, of course it was way dated, being in the early 90s. But it was never seen by the council, the majority of the fire department had no idea we had a master plan, and we weren't really using it as a plan. We weren't doing stuff that was in the plan. So I started looking at a plan, I actually started writing one. I found a couple different outlines, a couple that you just, you know, you, you take their words out, put your department in. I got to look, I think, this just isn't going to do, I don't want to do that. And I don't want it to turn into, this is Matt Trexel's strategic plan. I needed people to have buy-in, have their input, and really have it mean something. So that's why we had the committee set up. So we had agreed upon goals and directives at the end of the, of the planning. And then we need to have a plan so we can best use our limited resources, among them being our people, our time, and of course, our finances. So here's our mission statement, we did visit that. We, we came up with this mission statement somewhere around eight years ago when I first became the chief. We had a series of meetings at the fire department and redid our mission statement. And we felt that this, as a committee, this was still a good, irrelevant, meaningful visions, or mission statement, so we stuck with that. "The mission of the Burlington Fire Department is to provide for the fire and life safety needs of the community in the most professional, courteous, and efficient manner possible." Then the vision statement, like I said, we've never had a vision statement for the department, and we've all kind of had the same vision, right? We want to be the best fire department in southeast Iowa. When somebody calls 911 for EMS or for a fire, we want them to think, man, I hope Burlington shows up, and when we do, that they should be glad that we're there because we're the best. So, that's kind of what our vision statement is saying there. "We're dedicated to becoming a premier emergency response agency through exemplary service, leadership, and innovation." And part of the leadership is being that leader in southeast Iowa. We try to do now, that now, we try to support other agencies, like with Lee County Ambulance, when they're, when they're taken over. They come to us and we try to help them out with whatever expertise we can provide to them. And I think we kind of have that reputation, that we do want to be a leader and want to help other people. We also learn from them in that process. So the fire department core values, again, we didn't have a set of core values on paper. And of, this is probably one of the best parts of this, this planning process. And even the guys from the fire department were saying that this was the part they really enjoyed the most. And probably because it was actually so positive to sit in a room with a bunch of guys that were, some were older, some were newer to the department, and we just put up that, what do we think are our values? And we had a whole board covered with all good things about our department. And then we kind of had to decide and argue with each other, no, this one's more important than this one. And so it's like, we're arguing about things that are actually really good about our department. So, it was really fun to sit in there and discuss this and try to narrow it down to something that we could put on paper, so. The nice thing is we, after we did this, I presented these to the shifts, I went to all three shifts. We talked about the core values, we put them up on the wall, and immediately started using them for different things, like our employee evaluations now, that's incorporated in there. Our hiring practices, we've changed that up a bit to incorporate the values. And then promotions are coming up here in January, we're going to use, they're incorporated in there as well. And so the five we came up with were honor, we're going to conduct ourselves in a manner worthy of the respect of others, our reputation is dear to us, and we will not engage in activities or conduct that could tarnish our image in the community. We act with integrity, we do the right thing no matter who or who is not watching. And then excellence, that's been a theme of ours probably the last couple of years. We've got a leadership coach that we use, and a lot of us already heard the Vince Lombardi, different versions of his quote, you know, we're going to pursue perfection, and then the, and by doing that, we're going to, at least going to land on excellence. We're going to at least be excellent, we're probably never going to be perfect, but we're going to, we're going to aim for perfection. So that's where that, that came from, but. "We're not going to settle for good enough or become complacent. We consider ourselves to be professionals constantly striving to learn and improve our performance." Compassion is one that if, if I just wrote my own plan, I would have definitely put that in there, because I think that's like 90% of what we do, is we're out there just showing compassion for people and for our coworkers. But "We express kindness, concern, and empathy to each other and the customers we serve. We do not just have sympathy for those in their time of need. We also have a desire and willingness to alleviate their suffering through action." So, we keep telling our guys, it's not about just feeling sorry for somebody. It's about you do have sympathy, and then you, you want to do something, and you try to do something to alleviate that, that suffering. And I was reading a report last week that the guys were out on an accident north of town. So somebody's worst, worst day, or they're having a really bad day anyway. And the person, we took some people to the hospital. One particular man didn't have a ride home, and they put him in the engine, they drove him to the south side of town, took him home. You know, the tow trucks took the cars, and so he was kind of stranded out there. Kind of something maybe 10 years ago, we really wouldn't have thought, you know, we just don't give people rides. Well, they showed this guy some compassion and drove him home, and I thought, you know, the guy was having a really bad day, he probably hasn't quit telling people about how he got a ride home in the fire truck, you know? And there's a certain group of people that'll be like, well, we're liable, we can't have people in our fire trucks. It's like, who's, who's the safest drivers on the road, or who should be? It should be our, you know, we're not taking him on emergency, we're not running lights and sirens to his house. But that was a really nice thing. And then I read one the other day where they were on a diabetic call, and they got the lady all situated, got her with, started IV, gave D50. She was awake, alert, she was in bed, but she didn't want to go to the hospital, which is common on diabetics. But to keep her blood sugar up, they went in the kitchen and they made her a sandwich, got her a drink, and brought it over, put it by her bed, and they weren't, they didn't go, hey Chief, look what we did. I just happened to be looking through the reports and saw that they did that. That's, you know, that's the kind of compassion that we want to show people. Did they need to make her a sandwich? No. You know, she wasn't asking them to, they just did that out of compassion. So I thought that was a really nice thing. "Community, we value the citizens of Burlington and the surrounding areas. We treat every person with the utmost dignity and respect. We are grateful..." We are grateful to the citizens for everything that they provide to the department. And we appreciate the diversity of the community and seek to represent all." Accountability was the last one. "We accept responsibility for our actions, decisions, attitude. We do not make excuses, but learn from our mistakes in order to be better tomorrow." So another thing that we've really been focusing on with our leadership coach is taking accountability for our attitudes at work. So that has actually really improved the atmosphere at work. Any questions on the core values?
No, I love it, and I love that quote. I highlighted it.
I do want to comment, though. I have family that lives over in Quacka, and they've talked about times where they've gone out on a call, and you guys have shown up. And from just what they've told me and your core values that you just mentioned, they talked about each and every one of those and how you guys achieve those. And they're just wild by you and your professionalism and your compassion and everything you guys do. So you nail it. You nail it all. So they're talking about you, you know, in many ways.
Thanks for passing on. The guys really do appreciate that kind of, when we get a, you know, we're not out there seeking compliments or asking people to do that, but it's really nice when that stuff does get passed along.
And it was just passed along to me just because I was sitting in the room. Like, you know, they're talking about you, and it's all good things. So that's great.
Thank you.
So I know Linda did a ride-along, what, a year ago?
Yeah, and I lasted a few more hours than someone else.
I don't hear it. I did a 23-hour and 50-minute ride-along, and I get chastised for missing the last 10 minutes.
Yeah.
And I tell you what, I've spent a lot of time with a lot of the departments in the city over the last three years, and I'll be honest, that was the most impressive thing that I have done to date with the city of Burlington. So, and it comes back to the people and your equipment and what you've put together. So I see Nick shaking his head back here. I wrote, we're with the Salt guys too, okay? But, so I'm impressed by this. I'm impressed by you. I'm impressed by your department, so appreciate it.
Thanks. So the next thing we did was a SWOT analysis. So in order to determine some things that we need to work on, we did a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. And we did that as a group, but we also sent it out to the whole fire department. So anybody that wanted to get on there and put stuff in there, it was anonymous. I made that clear to them so they could be perfectly honest. So of course, the strengths and the opportunities, that's the stuff, yeah, we really love this stuff, right? We have great community support. We have all this good stuff going on. But it's really the weaknesses and the threats that we need to look at. It's like, how do we need, how can we make those better? And actually, I mean, of the things we did in the meeting, that's probably the part I don't like the most is that, you know, you look at these and you go, oh, you know, people have this, these attitudes or these feelings or, you know, these doubts about our department. But it's true. And I forgot to mention, I didn't even bring it. We have an assessment done of our fire department by ESCI. I mentioned it in the document here, but they graded our department on 11 different areas. And so we had that in front of us during the meetings, and my department has access to that. And so when it says in here, oh, like, we don't have a professional development plan, that's something that this ESCI had noted in our assessment, like, we need, you need to work on this. So we knew a lot of the areas where we were already deficient in and where we needed to work on, so...
And Chief, let me interrupt you real quick because I was involved with this. And I will say that when the firefighters and the EMTs were going through this weaknesses, almost everything that they listed, they also talked about how they could fix it.
Right.
In-house, with working with each other. So I, this, and credit to you and to everybody to put the weaknesses and threats in there so you can look at it, and it does become a living document. For instance, a few local applicants this last time knocked the ball out of the park with applicants, so...
It was one of the paramedics that said, if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but he's like, 80% of the stuff on the list we could take care of in the first year.
Yeah.
Just because it's small, it's not small in terms of its effect, but it's easily correctable.
Right.
I loved their passion when they were talking about it.
Yeah. I was going to mention that at the end, but that, the whole process. It was one of the funnest things that I've ever done as the fire chief, and it was the most rewarding, is this, so... So that's, there's the SWOT analysis. So here's the real, the whole reason that we do a strategic plan, starting on page 13. I got way behind myself here. And so there are six overarching goals. Training by far was the one where we see a lot of deficiencies. A lot of those were noted in that assessment of our department. We value training. We try to do all kinds of training. So our goal under training is to pursue service excellence by building quality training programs. So we try to do that, that we've been trying to do that. It's really hard as we get, well, we weren't really busy last year, about the same number of calls. But our crews are out on calls a lot, so it's really hard to do training on duty. We had a training officer position that we lost back in 2011. So since then, we've shifted all the training responsibilities to the shift officers, mainly the battalion chiefs. And so they're not there every day, so they have to try to coordinate training on other shifts. Or they pass it on to the shift officers on that shift. Well, they're involved in going out on emergency responses too. So training is always really hard to squeeze in. On the EMS side, we've contracted with a paramedic instructor at SCC. That's a little bit, I won't say a little bit, that's a lot better than what we've ever had. And that training is actually going really well because he coordinates it. He shows up. He's very, he's very patient with our guys. If we're out on calls, he'll stay there until we're ready to start class. If everybody leaves in the middle of class, he'll hang around an extra hour until people get back so he can continue class. So that's worked really well for our department on the EMS side. And I'm not going to go through all of these objectives. Basically, we had an objective, and then we had a timeframe, and then we had a critical task under each one of those objectives. I do want to hit a few, Objective 1A there. Ensure all training programs meet or exceed industry best practices. So we can do that without a training officer. But I would say, of all the stuff in the goals, that's the one that we can't do without your support for one. But that's one thing I would really like to accomplish, is getting a training officer back in our department. I have some ideas on how to do that that would help with some other areas. Particularly, we have some stuff there, back in there about, not really job shadowing, but giving people some experience on the admin side of stuff. And so we used to have a deputy chief of training. We've talked internally about not having that high a level of a training officer, but more of a captain or lieutenant. Or maybe it could be captain or a lieutenant, either one. And that way, you can move people in and out of shift roles into a training officer. They do get some experience on the admin side, doing budgets, purchasing, different kind of admin duties that they don't get now until you're an admin. Hey, congratulations, you're the deputy chief, and here's all the stuff that you've never experienced before that you have to do. I kind of, like, the police department already does it, right? Where they move people in and out of different job roles. We just don't really have that. You're a lieutenant, you're a captain, you're a battalion chief, that's what you do. You know, there's no, other than me maybe assigning you a special duty, there's no moving around or different assignments within that role. So anyway, that's one idea that we would like to pursue.
So I know, like, with some of the police officers, we get grants, like cops grants and stuff like that to focus on specific programs. Is there anything out there in the firefighting world to focus on training that we could take advantage of?
I'm not aware of it. I know there is some stuff, like on the fire marshal side, they have a fire prevention grant where they do allow you to do some hiring, you know, for a certain, kind of like the safer grant, but it's aimed at fire prevention activities, not necessarily training. But it's something I could look at this next go-around with that grant. Some of the other, the objectives there, improve recruit training process. And I'll just say that there's a middle one there. Critical tasks is utilize the Illinois Fire Service Institute Recruit Training Academy. We've already done that. We talked about that last year, I think, during the budget season. And we've already sent, we just had our first firefighter go through that program. It's a big hit. You can ask him about it. It was kind of like firefighter boot camp. He got like 30 live fires in while he was over there. Got a lot of good training that we just can't provide here locally. So that's definitely going to help our department. Objective 1C, improve EMS continuing education. So establish the EMS improvement group and policy. We've done that, as well as evaluate current EMS education program. That's kind of an ongoing thing, but we really do have good continuing education with EMS. Matter of fact, we're farming some of that out right now to the fertilizer plant in Lee County. They've come on board. They use the same instructor. They just reimburse us part of his cost. And I believe Lee County Ambulance is going to do the same thing, so that just reduces the amount that we pay into the program. Just because it's, they know that our guys are out there saying, we have really good EMS training. A lot of people really struggle with that, so... Skip one down, the improved firefighter training program. Objective 1E is improved technical rescue training program. I would say the more that we've taken on as a department, whether it be hazmat, confined space, all these different rescue skills, the airport rescue firefighting. Every time you do that, guess what? You add on a whole nother set of skills that you need to learn the first time, and then you have to do continuing training to keep up on them because you just don't have a lot of confined space calls. And if you're not regular on that training, you forget it. Objective 1F, create officer development program. 1G, improve hazardous materials emergency response training program. The first thing we had on there was appoint a hazmat team leader. And we've done that. Captain Howard volunteered, so I didn't really have to appoint him. I asked for somebody, and he stepped up. And they're already taking that hazmat training program way farther than we've been in a long time. So I'm really happy with that. Provide a fire training facility. Again, we don't have anywhere to do live fire training. Occasionally, we'll bring a prop in from the state and do that, but we do need to do that on a regular basis. Goal 2, community engagement. Strengthen our relationship with the community by building greater connections. Objective 2A was improve recruitment of Burlington area residents. And the critical task, the first one we had was establish BFD recruitment committee. Well, we did that in May of 2020, and that's where we changed up our recruiting criteria, our hiring practices. And we really did have the best turnout for testing that we've had, well, since I've been on the department. So it was really good. And in that, we did the next two critical tasks. They're still work in progress. Obviously, we haven't knocked these out of the park yet. But identifying mechanisms to engage Burlington area high school students. One thing we've done there is we've identified a contact for each school, a firefighter that said, I want Burlington Notre Dame. I'm going to be the person, if they need anything from the fire department, they call me. I'm going to reach out to them, try to get in the classroom, that kind of thing. Well, with COVID, we really haven't been able to do much of anything there. But we do have a strategy that we're working on there. And then also identify strategies to improve the diversity of the department. So again, we worked on that in that committee. So definitely not done with that, but we're making some progress. Objective 2B, improve community outreach efforts. One thing we really want to do is establish some type of anchor event. We talked about that a lot when I went through the shifts doing the strategic plan. So we do have a lot of good ideas. Goal number 3, under service delivery, we want to exceed the community's emergency response expectations. We want to go above and beyond. We don't want to be complacent in our duties. So number, well, 3A, the objective, develop a deployment model. It's really what a deployment model is. It's kind of down in there where it says, create a standards of coverage document. And that's something I'm going to start working on myself. It basically looks at your, the capabilities of your department relative to the risks in your community. And so that's something I'm going to be doing. The next couple of things, explore fire department accreditation and pursue ISO Class 1. And those really are just to validate your performance as a fire department. How do you prove that you're to the best by becoming an ISO 1 rated fire department?
What are we now, a 3?
We're a 3. We are really close to a 2. I think we could probably reapply and probably get that. The 1's going to take some work. But it's possible for a department our size, especially, the last time we did it, we had, we were only operating two stations. And so we had a huge part of our town, they look at the road miles and your response time. They're like, you can't make it in the response time standards, like the Lenox Park area. So that really hurt our score on our deployment. So hopefully, we'll really pick that up on the next one. 3B, this would be obviously the most expensive goal that we have in here or objective, and that's to build a Station 3 on the city's northwest side. We're in, I keep wanting to call it Baker's Pride, but it's Blackhawk Services Corporation building now, the Krispy Kink Cream Bakery building out there on Mount Pleasant Street. And it's, if you haven't been in there, you should stop by, just knock on the door. It's really small. It's got like enough room for a small little kitchen and a couch and a table, and then two little bedrooms. And so it's maybe a third the size of this room altogether. It works for now. It's okay, and we do provide really good service out of there. They haven't charged us a dime to live in there. We don't pay any utilities. Once the roof's leaking, we call them. They send somebody over right away, and they fix it. So it's been awesome. It's been good for us. I think they appreciate that we're on site. But I don't think that's a long-term solution for a third station. Goal number 4, health, safety, and wellness of our employees. So promote the physical and mental well-being of department members. We want to improve the physical fitness of department members. Just one thing I'll make note of is the install station alerting system. That's something the council's already approved. It's in progress. I just was in contact with them today. They're starting to ship the items to the department. Hopefully, it'll be up and running around the first of the year. Objective 4B, improve mental well-being and resiliency of members with the critical task there of establishing a peer support team. So I put that down as 50% accomplished. We do have two people that are trained. They kind of have their own group. It's just not formalized in policy. But it's definitely there. It's available to our guys. They know who these people are if they need to, if they're having any issues with work, home, finances, they can reach out to the peer support team. Objective 4C, improve emergency response safety. Goal number 5 is all related to community risk reduction. So we want to prevent and mitigate fire and life safety risks in our community. So we have a lot of good programs. We don't really have a good evaluation for those programs, nor do we establish goals. So the first thing we want to do is establish a committee that's going to set the goals, and then every year, we can evaluate, are these programs effective? We have a lot of anecdotal evidence, especially with the smoke alarm program. We know we've been to places where we were called there for a fire, and then it was one of the smoke alarms that we put in that alerted the people. So we do, we do know that it can be effective. The last one, whoops, I didn't go ahead, is goal number 6 is related to facilities, apparatus, and equipment. So we need to acquire and maintain needed facilities, apparatus, and equipment to support the department's mission. So first, I would say, we have great equipment. Our guy, we are so blessed, our engines, our EMS equipment, our ambulances, our stations, other Station 3s is pretty great, you know, it could be better. But the two main stations are in really good shape. If you travel around the state, you, real quickly, you're like, man, I can't wait to get back to Burlington. We have really nice stations. They're, they have the things in them that we need. And part of this plan is we want to keep it that way. So instead of having any surprises pop up, we want to do some things, like create a 25-year apparatus replacement plan. Really, the only reason I stretched that out to 25 years is ladder trucks. About a 20-year is what NFPA says, but we'll probably stretch it out even a little longer than that. But you need to put it in the budget, so it's always in there. It's like, okay, 25 years from now, we got to buy another ladder truck. So that's why that plan is such a long time. That goes, that plan goes along with the 25-year capital improvement. So that's in progress, and the apparatus replacement plan is actually 90% completed. 6B, we want to maintain adequate facilities. And so this is something the deputy chief, he's been talking about it for a while. Hopefully, we'll get that done, is that's develop a facilities maintenance plan, just so we don't get caught off guard, like we're looking at a new roof on the fire station just because we recently had some damage. And this is something that really wasn't in our, we weren't thinking, hey, we need to get a new roof until we had a problem with it, so... So in summary, again, this is a living document. It'll be changed from time to time. I'm really excited about the commitment of the fire department members. Like I said, we've already started working on things. They're excited about it. They're joining committees. They've bought into the idea of having core values and working off of this plan. And that's really my presentation of this plan. Again, it was great for me. I had a lot of fun. I think the people on the committee had a lot of fun. There's already been a few people that have volunteered to get on that committee now, moving forward, to help out, so... Any questions?
No, I just want to say I'm impressed with you guys, everything you talk about and stuff. Like, you just, I just sit here, wow, you are so organized and thinking ahead and the future and always trying to improve and actually live up to the X1 street. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does it make you want to be a firefighter?
I don't think I can hang with these guys.
I learned I don't move fast enough to be one. I had a question on the Citizens Fire Academy. Would that be similar to the one that the city has?
It's similar, but it's all fire-related. We did one... We, we did one, I'm going to say around 2010, 2011, Jim Whittaker, we had a captain here, Captain Jim Whittaker, he ran that for several cycles and then it just kind of fell off the radar, but yes, definitely something that we want to do. There's a couple of different, you know, what day of the week are you going to do it? How many hours, that's all up for debate, so there's all different versions of that, but yeah, I think it's a great, it's a really good program.
I think it's a great idea, the more citizens know about something when there's problems, they're a lot more forgiving.
I always feel like when we do the, the city citizen program, they come down for like two hours, it's like, we really just scratched the surface and I think that, that, I think even the people, a lot of times we go way over our time limit, people just hang out and we talk and whatever, I think there's a lot of opportunity there to, to do other, you know, hands-on or look into different operations that we can't really do in two hours' time, so definitely want to expand on that.
And then I had a, a comment on the, the fitness testing. I've heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, once someone is hired as a firefighter, there's no continued fitness testing?
There's no annual fitness testing, no. We do have a return to work, so if somebody's hurt and they're off the job before, well, if they're off for more than 30 days, they do have to go through an assessment. It's, it's, right now it's through Great River Business Health, it's through the physical therapy program, it's like job-related, it's not easy, people will like, I want to come back on the 29th day because I don't have to go do that test, not because they can't pass it, but it is, it's physically taxing.
Yeah, I bet, yeah, yeah. And then when I toured with the fire department, I saw how small that third station is and you have to exit it to change your mind, I mean, I really would like to see you guys get a newer station sometime, I, I think it would really, really be great for all the wonderful things that you guys do.
Thank you.
I'd be free to compete with the bridge run, but if you guys ever want to do a five day, I'll throw money at it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll run with you guys.
Chief, I'm just going to say that, you know, the quality of the document, because I was involved with this, this, this thing is built with sweat equity, it was you and the department doing it, that's why it makes this a real living document and then the other thing is to, to package it the way you did and to find a way to do that so cheaply, a hat's off to you, because it, it's a great document and I look forward to editing it and, and knocking out some of those weaknesses and turning them in strakes, so good job.
Me too.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I was there for the first meeting when this was kind of started back in 2019, where, you know, pre-COVID, you kind of, everything gets lost, but this far exceeds what, what you proposed at that point for, for an ending document, wouldn't you say?
I think, I think there was apprehension on everybody's part, we've never done it, I wasn't real sure either how it would turn out, so.
We knocked it out of the park, so.
Yeah, it did and, and the, the communication lines opened between command staff and, and firefighters, EMTs was invaluable, so it's fantastic, good job.
Thank you.
Hats off. No questions, just comments, good comments all the way. Now, next up is a resolution approving refunding the confined spaces agreement or fees for Blackhawk Services Corporation, that's still you, don't go anywhere.
Yeah, so every year in December, we send out invoices to all the companies that we have a contract with for confined space rescue, so if they're going to go into a confined space and they want to put us on their document as being their rescue service, then they contract with us for that service and the council approved the fee schedule, I think we're maybe four or five years into this and so anyway, we send them out a new agreement, here's, here's what we're going to do and here's what you're going to do and then here's the fee. Well, I sign those every year and they get sent out, well, we were sending one to Blackhawk Services Corporation, eight hundreds, I can't remember what it is now, it's on the resolution, $850, I thought, wow, we're going to send them a bill for $850 and they have never charged us one cent to be in there with the station or a utility bill or anything, I said, I feel kind of bad and I sent it off and they replied, do you think we can work something out in lieu of us paying this, that, you know, for letting you guys have this for a station, I said, I think we can do that, so that's what the resolution is for, just to forgive their $850 annual fee and call it rent payment, I guess, but that's what, that's what they're charging us for a year.
There's no questions on that one, Shirley, right? No, well, good.
Okay.
Thank you, chief. Number five, resolution approving submitted proposal for funding through the Iowa development of agriculture and land stewardship, Mr. McGregor.
This resolution simply extends the IDOL's grant dollars that we already have allocated and are being put to use for the Fifth and, or the, the parking lot at Fifth and Valley. The time period by time we'll close out this project will be past the first of the year, so we just simply need to ask for the extension.
Okay, any questions, gang?
They're getting asked for down there, okay.
Yep. Then six is set a date for a public hearing for January 4th, 2021, yes, come on, 2021. Consideration of an ordinance amending section 155.03, sections amended of chapter 155, international building code of the Burlington Municipal Code, and Mr. McGregor, again? No? All right, oh, that's set of hearings, sorry. And then discussion items, a little discombobulated there.
Yep.
Road use plan, Mr. McGregor.
So the five-year road plan, I've already given you a presentation, I will go back through it, maybe a little bit more bridged and talk about the five-year road plan. I'm not going to talk about the seal coat as we've kind of, kind of arrived at a conclusion last time about the conversion. So I wanted to, since we're in a better facility now for presenting through media, I thought I would put what the charts that I had on the PCI data, I tried to put it in a way that would be better explanation of what I was trying to get at when I originally put the slideshow together. So PCI data is the pavement condition index, we get these scores every two years by the Iowa State, they have a mobile van that drives around and drives the city roads. You can see in 2013, the scores, when I scrunched it up, you can't really see, the, the low end is, is the low end of the road condition, which is bad and the, to the right is the, is the top end, which is 100. And so what I'm trying to show to you is the, is the bell curve that we've been getting closer to over the last four years, which is more traditional to what you're trying to work for. We're, we're simply pushing some of the roads that are in worst quality towards the higher end, we're trying to, we're trying to fix things. So I know a lot of cities use the data that's collected from the, from Iowa State and they try and put it into the programs that we also operate. We don't fully use that program, it's a little bit clunky and we don't have enough staff to be able to fully, fully manage that software, but a lot of communities will search for a, an average PCI score, that, that's one thing that I wanted to address is, is that something that we want to look towards doing? We can try and use that number and try and figure out how to better choose roads that will overly improve the PCI score, or we can just kind of continue down the path of trying to make the best choices that we can that are in front of us, so I wanted to have a little bit of that conversation about, you know, what that means and what PCI score is even for, you know, there's a lot smarter minds out there than me that look at this data and try and figure out, you know, if you choose road A versus road B and C, ultimately you're going to ramp up your score by this many points or something, so. Something we can talk about if that's the way you'd like to move forward in the future, we don't probably fully use that software to our best advantage, but there's a lot of input that needs to be put into those things and unfortunately, we just don't have the staff to do it, so.
So I think my biggest question is, if you, if you're addressing roads the way that we're addressing roads today, we're over time going to naturally increase the PCI score of the overall system, you're always going to have a bell curve, right? Like, that's the goal. You're always going to have really good roads and some really bad ones and then you're going to have the largest percentage, 60 to 80% that are kind of right smack dab in the middle.
Yeah, so what, what I guess what I'm trying to get at is, yeah, you'll, you'll increase the PCI score if you're trying to improve roads, what I'm afraid of happening and the way we've been going is more arterial and collector-type roadways have gotten the focus of, of our fixes and a lot of the residentials, which everybody lives on, is what they see every day and so the number of those residentials that are in a lower quality state will tend to grow, but the overall lane miles of the roadway system should be improving, so it's, we don't have enough money to ever spend to do all of that type of work, but I just wanted to address ways of figuring out, you know, what PCI data is and how you can use it and the way they can help format your road plan.
So does it not make sense to try and have like a combination of both? I think one of the biggest concerns I have is if we put a road on the five-year plan, it needs to stay on the five-year plan unless something catastrophic comes in and knocks it out.
Well.
Because we've had that happen here in the last couple of years, we'll put a road, we'll put a road on.
And, and the reason why that is, is similar to what the fire department stuff is, it's a living document.
Right.
It needs to change based on what we as staff that sit down and look at what the road conditions are, where they sit in use and function and what is more important and what we're recommending. The road plan can change based on what city council wants. If we all want to put a Hagaman or a Glendale Drive or a Morning Sun back into where its original position is, we can do that because you all are the council that are voting for that plan, however, as staff, when I sit there and look at a five-year road plan and I see roads that are in more need than others based on the criteria that we have to select from, I, I would, I'm going to have to put forward what I think the best plan is moving forward.
And, and I completely agree with that, I just think that if we're, does it make sense to come up with a more structured way of putting the roads on the five-year plan to ensure that the projects are doable? And like I said, it can be something that can change and fluctuate based off of funding or need, but do, do, do we need to have a better plan in place for how we're, how we're selecting those roads? Because like you've already admitted, you're eventually going to end up with a large pool of residential roads that are in, in significant need of repair.
I don't know that you would change it, I mean, ultimately, it's going to come down to dollars. If you were to go to the opposite, if you were to go look at residential, simply based on what worst first, what's the worst PCI data out there, we're going to go tackle those, well, your other roads tend to suffer too, so. I, I was just trying to explain, I guess, the system that we do and kind of how some of the ramifications that it can come with. So I don't know that it needs to change in the structure of the way the plan is developed, if you all would like me to do that, I most certainly will.
I'm, I'm fine with the way we've been going after it, so.
I have an idea like how you tackled, sometimes like North Mill, you tackled a little bit of the neighborhood, you were in the area doing some work and you kind of, you kind of stretched out where you could do and, and fix roads where you were at and I, I like that idea that as we do a road project in a certain area, if there's something nearby that needs our attention, you tend to squeeze that in and so I, I think that would improve that score as well, you, you try and just, you do it naturally anyways, I think that that's a, a great thing that you're doing and something that we should continue to do.
It's kind of one of those field-type things, I mean, we could put in all this data into a computer system and it would spit out what she should fix, I don't think that's the right solution.
Right, so right now you're using, you are kind of already using a combination.
We're using PCI data and the knowledge that I have of the staff that work there.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a combination of effort.
And I think that's the best course at the point, at this moment.
Can you move me forward, Eric, by any chance? For some reason, this won't. I just wanted to, this map shows the, the PCI scores in two, in five different categories, kind of showing you, mostly I wanted to show you the lower quality roads and kind of where they are, this data is from 2019, so some of this information has changed with some of the roadway projects that we've accomplished in the last year and a half. So this is a map of the five-year road plan, but it does not include the fifth year because we were at the time still having that conversation on, you know, what was most important for that fifth year as we had some bigger projects. Can you move me forward again? I just think it must not be working.
Is there more battery in it?
I don't know. So fiscal year 22, we have the Harrison Street or Harrison Avenue, I don't know why I keep calling it street, I mislabeled it in my own presentation, we have a $4.8 million project planned, it will replace the current roadway with PCC at its current dimensions, so we're not expanding the roadway width from Harris, from Main Street all the way over to Summer and it includes the Summer Street intersection. We will also be, this map has changed some, we'll be moving the Storm sewer line to go down South Eighth Street and hit Dunham. We have talked to the school district and they're amenable to giving us the land, but we still have to finalize some of those things. Actually, Jesse just had a meeting with our consultants, Stanley consultants about this for 90s, did a 90% design plans, so here in the month of January, sometime in the middle, we should be having a set date on this plan set, there's still some property acquisitions that need to happen, but this is kind of the, to me, this is the example of what an integrated plan-type project looks like, where you're tackling more than one function when you're in the same right of way and this is the roadway that will go over top of the sewer line that we're fixing as of tomorrow, so I'll, we can talk about that in a little bit later.
Nick, is it 21 or 22?
This is fiscal year 22. That is for borrowing numbers per bonding, correct?
That's all Travis's stuff.
In the, in the track material that you gave them? That's bond, the, the Harrison Street project is listed as 20, 21, but that's the borrowing here, correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, as you look at the difference between what he is, what Nick is going through and then what you have there from Travis, Travis has taken Nick's projects and so if it's a fiscal year 22 project in our capital improvement plan, the borrowing occurs in 2021, in the spring of 2021, so Travis is showing it is 21 because he's going by when the bonding's occurring.
Okay, so Nick, the Harrison and Summer Street intersection, I assume you're going to fix the Dukes of Hazard ramp that we have going on there?
We will no longer have the ramp or the hump or the dip, I think it's labeled as a dip, but it's probably a combination of the both, so that will, we'll restructure that intersection with new lights. It will be reshaped a little bit to have a little bit better turning radiuses, the, the roadway serves as a, as a pretty decent roadway, however, the turning radiuses are pretty sharp and so any truck traffic that comes down there for deliveries for some of the local businesses, I know have problems making those turns, so we're going to try and improve that a little bit, there will be some property acquisition and we will have a conversation with the BEAT here, there are some, there are some things there that are a little bit funky with the way the roadway is designed, so.
Okay.
But overall, I think that this is a, one of our, you know, in my head, this is one of our better projects that we have laid out just because it's more thorough than just a, a straight-up road project.
Okay.
Fiscal year 23, I don't know, the, the Madison Street project is geared for that year, we have Tiger Grant on there, which will probably happen in that timeframe, so, but the Madison and Ninth Street project, we have budgeted currently as a $2 million project with 376,000 in STBG grants, it is a PCC replacement from Angular to South Street and then from South Street on to Sunset, which is, which is just south of Harrison, it'll be an asphalt overlay. This is the project where we are removing parking on south of South Street with planned bike lanes. In this conversation, Jim and I had talked about kind of alternatives to projects and this is one where I, I sat down with Jesse and developed an alternative to this project and it is a $3.8 million project that would be concrete for the full stretch of the roadway, it would, it would expand the, the curb lines south of South Street, so you would be able to have two lanes of travel and then a, a parking lane and then it would install a bike or a trail, a shared use path. So wanted to talk a little bit about that difference, I know it's kind of a bit of a jump up from the $2 million that's a planned project and as I'm sure Jim will address, this was one of the projects when we talked with Travis about being able to afford this project in its current model, I, I'll let Jim talk about that type of stuff, if we're able to do, granted, it has some other type of impacts for other things. If you had hit my, hit me forward. 24, we have four projects off to the right or left-hand side, which will be asphalt overlay in the bottom left down by the schools, the Division Street is, is going to be a, a patch and asphalt overlay, as you've noticed, Division Street is to get some really bad D-cracking in the, the joints there, we've tried to patch it over the last several years, but it just continues to degrade. And then the Agency Street project, which I'll probably show you the finances on the next page, but that is a PCC replacement for the full But that is a PCC replacement uh for the full width along with uh some sidewalk work. We received STBG grants uh for that project, so if you could hit me forward. And then Washington Street two um is an STB, STP at the time, STBG grant app. Um so uh Agency Street, uh one-point-eight million dollars, and we got one-point-two in SBG grants. So we're able to leverage our dollars there. And then Terrace, Johansson, um and Division will be overlay-type projects. Uh and you can see that, that work out there. Um Washington Street, we originally had this project when we applied for the STP grant um as a, as an asphalt overlay project, uh receiving eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um it was supposed to start kind of right now, uh but because of the impacts of Tiger Grant, we asked for an extension because we didn't wanna tear all of downtown up, all at the same time. Uh we were able to use this extension a little bit better than Tiger, uh you know, knowing the, the kinda the delays on that project. Um but we, in, in this four-point-eight million-dollar estimate, we would be using, leveraging TIF dollars to uh from Front Street to at least Sixth Street, uh replacing it with concrete and bringing in some of the, the things that you're gonna try and do on Main and Jefferson Street with the Tiger Grant. Uh you know, some of the similar type lighting, um potentially bringing in some type planners, uh bringing some of the feel up for that. If you'd hit me to the next slide. Uh fiscal year twenty-five, uh this is the Summer Street reconstruction project, so taking uh just south of where we'll end this next summer uh with that intersection, all the way south to uh just, I think it's south of um, man, Kestner. Uh it will be a PCC replacement. Uh we'll actually be expanding the width uh in some of those locations. Uh we'll put in curb and gutter in there along with some storm sewer. As you head further south, there's a lot of ditch work and culverts, and it tends to cause some problems down there. So we'll add some storm sewer, and then we've tentatively talked with the airport about taking some of that storm sewer uh down to a, a field and use that as a retaining pond. So hopefully get that storm water off into a contained area and not have too many problems. Um the other part of this conversation is, you remember, we had an incident on this roadway last year where a child was struck. Uh the lighting in that area is poor, and there is real no safe place for pedestrians or bike traff, traffic to be on uh other than on the roadway. Um and so it isn't with this project, however, um as Jesse and Eric and I have talked, um we have the potential to go after some TAP money, which is transportation alternatives, and bring uh trail in there. We'll do all the prep work, or we could do all the prep work with this type of project with the grading, so uh a trail-type project wouldn't be that unfathomable to get to, so. If you could.
On the, on that section, Nick, I'm sure you haven't looked at it yet, but the lighting? Is there possibly putting in a non-normal street light, something that that would be okay with the airport, but we'd get a little bit better lighting on that road?
Yeah, um I know that the FAA has requirements, and I can look into that.
I, I've seen, the only reason I bring it up, I was in a community not too long ago and around the airport, the lights, instead of being up here over our.
Brought them down.
Were lower and lower voltage, but because they were closer to the sidewalk, they lit the road a little bit, so. I'd, I'd like to see.
I can look into that.
Yeah, please. Thanks.
Yep. Um and then uh fiscal year twenty-six, we had talked about options. Uh as from the goal setting, Cascade Bridge was clear and evident that it needed to be listed here. Um I put it at seven million dollars based on the engineer's estimate and then some uh inflation escalating. I think that seven million is a comfortable number, uh not knowing some of the things that we're gonna have to do to appease Shippo uh with the, the, the removal of the existing bridge uh in some sort of a, you know, removal of, moving of the span section of the old bridge. Uh and then Valley Street, I had listed the one point, I kept that in here. Um I haven't changed that from the STBG grant, not knowing where y'all sat on that type of a project. I will change that um item um in the packet for next week. I'll have a, like last year, I had a packet of the listing of the projects and the dollars and the grants and a resolution authorizing that. Um and then Sunnyside was an option at six-point-seven million dollars, and then I laid out a phased approach. Um as Jim may, I'll just take it from him. When we sat down with Travis, we would, we would be able to structure Sunnyside, as you can see, in uh two different phases in fiscal year uh twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven uh to be able to lay that out um over time and be able to accomplish that and be able to fund it under our current structure. So it's really all I have to follow up on the five-year road plan unless you have things that you would like me to change. Um you know, the, the Madison Street project, is that something you would like to go forward with? I'm sure you'd like to talk with Jim before you make those types of decisions, um how we move forward and then kind of how that fifth year looks. So I can answer any questions you have, but I'd probably want Jim to come up and address some of those financial-type conversations.
I mean, I wouldn't mind looking at the Madison, but it's gonna be about affordability, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So we had talked with Travis about the ability to fund all of this, and you know, Travis can find a way to fund it, but uh there are some concerns that I would raise with it. You do have the document from Travis there, five pages. The front is, which you've already had a couple of questions based off of, that project listing for the CIP plan. He's broken it out by year, and again, as he's showing twenty-twenty-one, that's FY twenty-two, the first year of the CIP.
Excuse me, Jim, I don't think I have one.
Oh.
You wanna use mine, Jim? Or you got another one?
Okay.
I got.
Okay, I can even read this better. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
So, um so he, he's broken it out like for the first year, CIP versus TIF versus grant. Uh as he says, CIP, what he basically means is what's gonna have to be bonded for to cover the cost. TIF, of course, will have to be bonded for too. It'll count against debt service, but it would be covered by the TIF fund and not what our uh bond levy. And he's done that for each of the years. The one thing I would caveat on that, the twenty-twenty-five out there, which is FY twenty-six, is just a catch-all, cause Nick's presentation with Sunnyside had a project for at, part of it, at least in FY twenty-seven. And as we've done the, the borrowing, it's not just looking at what is the street projects, but what are some of the sewer projects that we've kind of committed a general fund or TIF funds towards? Um the primary ones, uh we have flood protection at the plant. Um well, actually, this next year, uh part of the Tiger project is doing some force main work along Main Street. Uh we've, we um have about three-point, three-point-three million that's listed there market force main. Um flood protection at the plant uh out there uh in FY twenty-three, three-point-seven million. Uh as we try to do the different phases of the, of the flood wall, uh there's a potential that we have a shortfall that we have to cover if we're trying to get everything done that we want, two-point-five million in FY twenty-four. And then FY twenty-six is a, a catch-all amount for sewer support. That's, that would be, I think with the, the Mississippi Sewer Interceptor, eliminating that and then doing a new uh run down Main Street, a new sewer pipe down Main Street with some lift sta, some minor lift station changes that are done there, and then an upgrade to the south lift station. I'm not sure exactly where that thirteen million fits in. But we're looking at having to do some significant support in there to make projects work. When we did that uh plan that initially sent to the DNR, I think that work that we were talking about there was a scope of work to occur between FY twenty-six and FY twenty-nine?
Over four, three, either three or four years.
Interceptor?
Yes.
No, we have it sooner than that.
Okay, twenty-five, the.
We have it in the CIP right now.
Okay. Start doing it, but then you have it spread over like three years. Um but Travis has it as one ballpark um out there at the end of the, the CIP plan uh to, to, to try to cover within TIF, to make sure that we can model covering it. The next few sheets, he's looking at a few different components within it. Again, the, just general obligation debt that was supported by our debt levy itself, looking at uh layering those projects um over a period of years. Kinda matches what you saw in the other, in the front sheet. The only difference being is that whereas that front sheet, the FY twenty-six projects are showing the twenty-five borrowing, he's got them all on that front sheet in that year. Uh on this sheet, he's shown them being uh spread out a little bit. Uh Cascade pro, the Cascade Bridge occurring in FY twenty-six. Valley Street reconstruction in FY twenty-seven along with, and looking at Sunnyside in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So projects through FY twenty-eight. Showing on the next sheet, stuff that, or projects that are funded through TIF. Um the projects that are in here over uh through FY twenty-seven, twenty-eight in that timeframe are really stretching the use of TIF. But they, they do, they do work. Uh the biggest one that he, that we have in here is the sewer support, that thirteen million with a borrowing in. Uh he's got it shown right now, just as a ballpark, in twenty-thirty um through forty-eight. That's an eighteen-year payback. That's not ideal, but when you're doing a TIF project for an infrastructure like that, you, you will see projects occur like that. He's reflecting the need to make sure on the following page to layer in, even if they're not a bonded levy or a TIF-supported levy, flood mitigation projects that are occurring uh over the next four years. So those have been part of our CIP plan and will continue to be so, and he wants to reflect that we're still trying to make sure that we're uh showing that that's an outstanding obligation. The final sheet shows the percentage of our debt limit, our debt capacity that's used. We have a policy in place that says we're not gonna go over seventy percent. Uh this sheet would show on the five-year basis, uh we'd get up into that, up to seventy-two percent out in twenty-twenty-six, um twenty-twenty-five. Uh the twenty-twenty-eight-ish, when you do, taking on a ma, major TIF project and doing all of these capital projects on a street side, would get us up to seventy-seven percent. It comes down after that, but we're also not showing debt that's occurring after that, so that's not, you can't look at that. The, those out years, you're gonna have more debt that falls in there. Um I think this is too much work on this. Now, can we, if, if you think about what our levy is currently, that the second page shows our, on the left side, shows uh in column two, our levy rate. It's currently three dollars and eighty cents. Back in uh two thousand twelve, when we increased our levy rate, it, it had previously been, oh, I don't know what exactly it was, but it was more in the three-forty range. Uh we've been talking about bring, trying to bring it back down to the three-forty range moving forward. Uh when we got over our fiscal cliff on debt service payments, our debt service payments, we, the fiscal cliff was twenty-three. Fiscal twenty-three, so we'd been talked about around that time being able to start reducing those debt service payments. And theoretically, uh we'd have the ability to transition, depending on the amount of work we took on, uh down to more of like a three-dollar levy over time, not just back to three-forty, but down to three dollars. And that would put us pretty on, spot-on with what other communities uh twenty thousand above have for, that's the, that would be the average debt service. Not that we don't ha, can't have a higher, um but one of the things that comes up is we are a lever, a highly-leveraged community, and this really uh extends it. The ones that I would, I mean, you'll, we all have to make preferences in terms of where we are on streets. I don't wanna lose having Cascade Bridge on here, uh just based off of what the discussions we've had with the community and uh what came back with survey results for preferred projects. Um Nick would like to upgrade what we had planned on with the uh.
Madison.
Madison, and I just, I just don't see it. For one, you've had a couple of presentations tonight. Um one from the fire department and a discussion about the potential for adding a third station or a training facility. If you wanna contemplate that anytime in the next decade, you can't do all this work. Sorry, Nick.
There is pin at the ceiling now.
He did. Um and you know, the other, another part is, as you get into demo projects like the Klein Center, um we're, we're heavy on use of, of funds for other things, and how do, how do we approach that? Um I don't have a solution for it, but you're not gonna find a solution if you use all of it on this one component. So, and the Klein Center isn't the only place that we ha, we have a, a demo problem. Um.
So.
The other street project that I would put out there to think about, Washington Street, is one, it's all TIF-funded. And we've done it with a preliminary design to try to make it match uh Jefferson Street. And I think getting the concrete is, is very important, but is there somewhere where maybe we don't do everything else? But. So that's a spot where we could potentially provide a little bit of flexibility on our overall debt load and our use of TIF. And then if you have that, Klein Center doesn't fit into a TIF area, but there are other demo projects that may come up over the next few years that would potentially fall into the, a TIF area that would be valuable to leave some flexibility for moving forward. Now, I'd say, go ahead, Matt.
So how much, we've got seventy-one million of infrastructure between sewer and streets on here, uh stretching out to approximately twenty, we're saying approximately twenty-twenty-five?
Twenty-twenty-eight, really.
Oh, okay. So how much of this number do we need to shave to, to be able to fit these other potential projects into the CIP over the next ten years realistically? I mean, if we shave ten million, if we shave, do we need?
There's another part of that debate though, too, uh would be, you know, everybody wants lower taxes, but I don't. Under the, under the thought process, the people don't miss what they don't have. I would like, I'm almost to the point where I would rather see us keep the levy the same and get more work done and try to get caught up.
And even if we do the, stay at the three-eighty, I would like to see a little bit less debt, cause we're at, our debt capacity is going over that seventy percent threshold. And even at that seventy percent threshold, we're want, there's, out of twenty-some cities, over twenty thousand population, there are about four of us who are using up in that sixty-five to seventy-five percent range. We are an outlier in how much we use. I would say that a combination that I would do is reduce some of the capital work that's done. And if you keep the levy the way it is, be more aggressive on repayment and reduce how much we're spending on interest cover car, carrying costs. Uh and you'll find cities that will look at, how do we do a project, bond for it, and get it paid off uh over the course of a much shorter period of time. So they're, they're using the debt service levy, but they're not having so much of it go just for interest.
Interest, right. Okay.
I would say that so many people were asking for that bridge, understanding that it was an expensive project, that, you know, the keeping the levy where it's at would be part of that sacrifice. They knew what they were asking for and knew that they were gonna have to pay for it ahead of time and upfront. We're not, we're not hiding the fact that it, it costs a lot of money.
So there's another piece of this that I probably need to put in here because I wasn't, I, I didn't give you an idea why Travis did the three-eighty down to that three-fifty-three. There, that's a speci, there's a specific reason for that. That three-fifty-three, there's a twenty-seven cent levy that we do not use. It's a, a capital project levy. So you can, but you can have a twenty-seven cent tax that goes into just straight capital projects. Then you can go out and do projects that you don't have to bond for from money that you collect in that pot. that you collect in that pot. And if you don't have to bond for it, that means it doesn't have to go through an election process. You have more, you just have a, you have a little bit more discretion to do a capital project. Now, for instance, you're trying to cover Eric's demo project, you have a fund that builds up money off of that twenty-seven cent levy. You can now have the discretion to go spend and do that demo from that, that capital reserve project. You could also do that and say, when we're trying to figure out a way, how do we come up with funding for a third fire station or a training facility? You could let that build up over a period of years and use it to cover that cost. So part, I guess, I did lose track of what I was trying to do with that.
Sorry.
With, when we were talking with Travis, we had talked about the idea of having that levy be steady over time, but transfer a portion over to that to allow a little bit of flexibility.
Specific use, okay.
So, this, the way he modeled that is, was to give us the ability, if we wanted to, to stay at that three-eighty levy, but transition how we use a portion of it, put it into a different pot, so you have some of those flexibilities. That being said, we're still over debt.
Yeah.
I'd say, would we still be servicing our debt?
On that part, the projects that you do out of that twenty-seven cent levies?
I'm just saying, are we still, we're still servicing our debt as we work our way, getting that to twenty-seven cents group up, right?
You-
I don't want to pay interest on stuff that's, that's still outstanding either.
So-
But that's why you moved it down to twenty-twenty-six, he was looking at that, or twenty-seven?
He's trying to still work us through our existing debt issues and do a transition. That can be used to fund some other things, to, to do that, and gives you, give you some That being said, our, that levy, right as it's structured and what that's trying to accomplish there, we're a little bit high on debt. And, and to me, the ones that I would cut out is not doing what he's recommending on that change on-
Madison.
Madison. Now, given that, I know Nick is trying to accomplish two things. One, you've had some complaints from some, some individuals on, on that specific project, but he's also putting out a better product, and there is some value to that. So, that's one thing. The other one would be Washington Street, we can bring it down, our debt usage significantly if we cut the size of that project down. I just don't know how much we can cut it down and still have a, a good project, because I don't think we want to lose a, a new concrete street on that.
See, I'd, I'd like to see what we're able to do, we had talked about cutting up Sunnyside even to a degree, trying to cut that project-
It's cutting-
... scope and size.
It's cutting to two years right now.
Yeah, I see that, but perhaps, you know, pushing the less important part of that road further out to get it outside of this scope.
So, so think about, and, and, I mean, Nick could come up with a list of other streets that are going to need to be done.
Yeah.
I mean, South Main Street right now needs, needs to be done, and it's-
South Harrison.
And it's not on here.
Well, the interceptor will take care of it.
The interceptor will take care of a lot of it, but not all of it. So, I mean, we have some other, other things regardless, we, we just can't get everything done that needs done. But try to make sure that we do it in a way that makes sense.
I like the idea of the twenty-seven cent capital levy.
I do, too.
I would-
How long would that take to build up enough money to get the fire station, if we did that?
Well, you're going to, it'd be identified for several funds.
I forgot how, how much we-
How much valuation do we have in the city?
Seven hundred, we're right around seven hundred million?
So-
If you can work out a quick levy, I, I wanted to say it was like three hundred thousand or something like that, but I'm just saying something from a conversation-
So you'd be looking at about two hundred thousand a year on seven hundred million valuation?
I'm kind of guessing, because I, it, that was two weeks ago that I just looked it up, and then I've lost track of it. I wasn't thinking about that for tonight's conversation.
What's the price on the station?
Uh, we talked, station prices, well, like five to eight with the training tower?
Before we get lost in the woods, we're talking about the road use.
No, I didn't know if that would get, take priority over Cascade or-
Yeah, don't get lost in the woods on that, or trees.
Yep.
Whatever it is.
Well, I, I, yeah, lost the woods, trees. I do think that that is, that would be the way I would, if I'm sitting down in this council at that point in time, that's the way I would want to go. I don't necessarily want to increase taxes, but rather than lower, lower the levy, but in the, in the interest of trying to get more done, keep it where it's at, and, and moving that to a portion, I'm all for that.
Well, we've got, what, three years before we have to worry about that?
Which one?
Before the levy adjustment, or no, further than that?
Um-
Twenty-twenty-six?
I mean, he tried to, I, as I talked with him, I can't even, when we had that discussion, I can't even remember why we worked it in that year. I mean, that, just changing the levy down.
Well-
I mean, he-
And I don't think it was for a specific reason, other than it was the timeframe that a project was done.
So, I, I think it had to do as much as that, where the, the amount of projects that we were requesting to have done, where you could, where you could fit that in without getting into a problem for cash flow.
I think, I'd, I'd just say that, you know, this city's fiscal foundation over the last ten years has been built on the idea of trying to reduce its debt percentage, and primarily by previous councils, you and Stephanie and everyone else that worked as city staff. I don't want to go backwards on that from a council perspective. I don't, I don't know how excited I am to jump back into a seventy-seven percent debt capacity-
Yes.
Knowing the work that we've done over the last ten years as a city to get us out of that. So, I think there's a road forward. I don't know that I'm, I know I'm not on the wagon where we just start throwing all kinds of projects on there and figuring out how to pay for them later. I know that's not me. I'd like the idea of giving some of that tax levy back to the citizens at some point in the future. But I think there's definitely a, a number where you find compromise between being able to do projects and being able to fund them, so.
That, so what I would say, your FY twenty-three Madison is too high. I think we need to find a, a smaller scope on Washington that still makes sense. I don't know if it's even just shaving a million off.
Let me ask-
But then I think it's, some of it, you could, I think you could have these other projects out at the end, but understand, that's part of, as you're looking at a, a couple years down the road, you're, you're, the circumstances are going to be a little bit different, and you need, that is where you have to have flexibility with what a five-year plan looks like, and, and adjust it, stretch, push it out or condense it depending on what you have the ability to afford. And you're going to find that your costs are going to change from year to year. I think a lot of these projects this year are some of the same scopes. They've changed what the dollar amounts are on their anticipated costs based on what they've seen for previous projects. So you're going to see that occur from year to year, too. With that in mind, I would look at those last, that, those last sets, what he has out at the end, as kind of almost, you've got a two-to-three-year window where you're trying to do these, and you may have to reprioritize based off of what your circumstances are. But the question would be, when you're at that, which ones, what order do you prioritize? Are you going to prioritize Cascade over Valley, over Sunnyside, or are you going to prioritize Sunnyside over the others? What order are you looking at those in? And that, to some extent, is a, a decision from you all as a group. Seven million for Cascade, it may not be quite that much, but it may be, and that's, that's just a significant thing.
There's grant dollars potentially available, too, that I didn't calculate.
Sure.
And we may find that we're able to, you get a project out there and you get it underway, and if the timing's right, you may end up with funds that you didn't anticipate being able to get to help minimize it, but still, it's where are your priorities? What order would, do you want to take those off in?
I know I want a bridge.
Well, at this point, at this point, as much as I would like to see us do the Madison, I would have to say, well, we were comfortable with what we were doing originally, I would stay there. I am interested to look at what all's included in the Main Street, just be, just because, you know, yeah, would I like it to look like Jefferson and, and, uh, Main Street? Yes, but-
You said Washington, you meant Washington?
I meant Washington Street. I'd like it to look like the, you know, the Main Street in, in Jefferson, but none of the side streets are necessarily slated for that treatment either, so I don't know if I need to have that aesthetic part of Washington done.
And maybe you do it with the idea of doing two alternates, where, and, and you get, when you get out there towards that timeframe, take a look at what do you really think you can afford?
I think we can probably cross that bridge when we get to it, but I'm with John, I think between a combination of potential grant dollars for the bridge, cutting back the scope of the Washington Street project, cutting up the Sunnyside Street project, and pulling back the reins a little bit on what we're going to do with Madison, I'd like to think that we can at least come close to getting where we need to be to be able to get these projects done.
Remember, as he's looking at Sunnyside, one of the biggest things that we're trying to deal with there are a lot, some significant stormwater issues.
Yeah.
That's really what's driving the cost on that.
Yeah.
Besides a full-depth replacement.
It's separation.
So, yes, it's separation.
Wait, it is separated, or this is-
It will be separated.
So-
In this process.
So the project we're doing that involves the reconstruction of Sunnyside will be the separation project?
No, it's Sunnyside, I think you're talking about Harrison.
No, I'm talking about Sunnyside.
Sunnyside is separated.
Oh, Sunnyside is separated, okay.
There's, you, there you got a lot of above-ground drainage, and you've got stuff that just doesn't drain, what doesn't go where it needs to go.
It runs four blocks until the nearest one's there.
Yeah.
I'm still going to speak in favor of the shared-use trails. This is, all the recruiters in town that call me and say, you know, I can't get families to move here, you just don't have enough trail system. I, I'm putting a plug in for the trails.
It would be nice if we can afford it, but that's going to be a kicker. That's not going to be my major concern, though. It's whether we can afford it.
You talking about trails?
So are we, are we somewhat in agreement to give Nick a plan to, to work off with, stay Madison where it's at currently rather than doing the PCC? Look at that, I used the initials. Sorry, Nick. PCC on that, or, or are we okay with that, to give him some go-ahead? You know, obviously, we can continue to look, still look for money. Then the other thing would be on Main Street, what could we, I'd like to see some other plans on that, just to see what you're looking, not Main Street, thanks, Robert, Washington, to see what you're, what we were planning for the five million, but what can we also do that might be less.
Because we, we need to cut a little bit to fund the budget.
That's, well, that's my wonder, so.
Yeah, I was, I was okay with Madison the way it was. I'd be okay with adjusting Washington to, to see what we can bring the cost down on. You know, I would, I would agree with that.
Which one's first, Madison, right?
Yeah, Madison's twenty-twenty-three.
Madison's first.
And you don't know, but, I mean, we're talking about projects five and six years out.
Yeah.
You're-
None of us may be here.
Where the, where the growth of this, the city goes for ability to fund projects, you just don't know. It can change dramatically in five to six years. This is using a, and, it's using a conservative growth rate. Travis doesn't want it to look, get overextended and then show you something that you have thought that you could do something more than what you could. You may have a little bit of flexibility, but it's not going to be the kind of thing that says you can add another five-million-dollar project, for example.
Sure. That's where I'm at. Where you guys at? Give him, give him some guidance. I'm definitely, if I'm here, I'm definitely going to be about doing that, the other thing on the levy, as far as the twenty-seven percent go with capital projects.
Oh, yeah, I like the idea of reallocating twenty-seven cents of that to capital projects. I think that's a smart thing to do.
As much as I want to lower taxes, I'd rather not have to reason.
But I, I do believe that there's a number where you can have some compromise between trying to give some back-
Yeah.
-establishing that and coming up with a levy that covers these costs.
And we can look at that at that time.
Whatever they end up being, once adjusted.
Your nod in your head, what, what, what do you, what do you, let's, let's wrap this up. So, where are you feeling, Bill?
I agree with you.
Okay. Robert?
Yeah, I was already there.
All right. Linda?
Yeah, I'm for the twenty-seven, since capital project thing, we don't have to bond for it, it sounds like a good deal.
Yeah.
Okay, so I give you some marching orders, Nick. But if you can find some money in the meantime for the other things, go ahead.
So, one of the things, I guess I would say, too, I mean, he's, he's tried his best at that three-eighty. He's playing with, with, with some funds, trying, he's got the FY twenty-four CIP, the Bay Street project, he's paying that off in two years. At the same time, you're still even doing that, pushing our seventy percent debt capacity through those years. So, the three-eighty levy, if we're patient and don't overload it with too much capital, you can get a lot of work done, and over, over time, get to a period where you shorten those bond years.
Okay.
So, it's just we, it's not in the time that you're here on council, you know? It's, that's the hard part.
Yeah.
It's just making sure you put, we keep ourselves in a good long-term position.
Sounds good. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Nick.
Do you feel good enough to know what to do, Nick?
He's shaking his head no, but saying yes.
Do you have a budget, girl, buddy?
Sorry. All right. Stephanie, are you doing the budget dates?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, in the packet, should have been two schedules. Was, I didn't know which one is first. Is it the meeting schedule, or is it the calendar?
I gotta look.
Okay. It doesn't. Well, anyway, the budget calendar, I just kind of laid out the dates that we have to follow, to get the budget passed by the filing deadline, so those-
The first one is the special meeting schedule.
Okay. So that is the work sessions that we'll have, the special meet, budget meetings, the information is on there. We're scheduled to do the first one on a regular work session, it'll be a discussion item on January eleventh. That'll be Jim doing the overview and the five-year CIP plan. And then we're planning on having the next meeting that following day on Tuesday at three-thirty with library and the wastewater treatment and solid waste departments. We, you know, can have a set time on that, I know-
I will be there.
Okay, okay. So, I, that's why we kind of want to go over this. If you want to tweak this schedule, it will be recorded, you can watch it, but if we don't get all of these, you know, we could have a shorter meeting, or if that date doesn't work. And then the following scheduled one will be that Wednesday where we're scheduled all day on the twentieth.
Bring your lunch.
Break for lunch. And, and again, maybe we won't go all day, if, you know, it depends on how fast some of these-
Did you say we're all there, or you?
Yeah, we're all there on Wednesday.
We're all there on Wednesday.
And then, at that point, obviously, we can have discussions on Wednesday. If we run out of time, then we'll put it on the work session on the twenty-fifth to finish up any items that we might, you guys might want to be tweaking or just talking about, so.
Okay.
I guess, do you have anything to add, Jim, or do you, do you guys want to keep that Tuesday, or?
Well, Tuesday's trouble for Bill because it's your games, right? High school games, and you've lost your activities director. So is there any other date that works besides the Tuesday that week?
How long do you think that will last?
Well, that's what I was, we kind of talked, we could, we could limit it to two hours or hour and a half, if you wanted.
Because they're gone, or?
So, Thursday-
Yeah, so then we can move the library to the next Wednesday.
Occupied the next Wednesday all day.
He sticks to a time, so.
I'm just wondering if we could-
If I could be out of here by five.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Oh, wait, go.
Does, would that work for you guys if we, if we do the Tuesday, three-thirty to five, we just end at five? And however far we get, we get, and then whoever, if it doesn't, if we don't complete all those departments, they just go to the next Wednesday?
Sure.
Because we think, I mean, we got a lot of time on that Wednesday.
Well, you know, as long as we're done with three-thirty to five, you know, Don might be able to squeeze it down, we could do the library afterward, and you could always, no offense, Don, I was making a joke, but you could always watch the library later, but, yeah, I, if, if we could get done by five, that would, that would work.
Yeah.
That way that gets them, gets them out. Other than that, the schedule looks fine for me, but now is the time to discuss it, because we need to make sure we're firm on this, that we can all be there for those times.
Yes, Kathleen likes to get her, these are all, you know, special meetings that we're planning, so.
Are you looking?
I, it should be good.
Okay.
Tuesday at three-thirty might be a little early, but it just depends on who's route on that, where on that.
Well, if you can, your boss owes me a favor, use it.
Is this thing recorded?
No, I'm just saying. Tell them that. Tell him that favor he wants will happen, he gives you a little flexibility that day, we need to get it done.
Well, you know, like, it just depends where I'm at.
Yeah, I know.
If I drive out of town or whatever. Um, I was going to tell you guys that I do have that whole last week of January off, uh, I should be off, you can't use me on, the week before, I'm going to have something done, but I, I'll be available all week long, that last week of January, if anything happens, crazy in between now and then.
Okay, does the schedule work for you, Matt?
I, I don't see any reason why it doesn't.
Bill? We try and get out of there by five, we're a reasonable time on Tuesday?
Yeah, cause I, I start at, the JV game starts at four-thirty, but I can have somebody watch that one, and then the Bar C starts at six.
Okay, Linda?
I, I should be okay.
All right. Let's, let's roll with that.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Thank you, okay, and the last, last thing on the agenda is appointments. Uh, it looks like, uh, John Schultz's term is expired for the Airport Authority, and it's, it's asked of council to consider reappointing him for a four-year term, which expires in, uh, September twenty-twenty-four. The Animal Hearing Board has got commission, uh, commission member Angela Beard resigned on the twenty-fifth of November, and Casey Shoemaker has expressed an interest and has requested the council review her attached application, consider appointing Casey Shoemaker to fill the unexpired term, which would end in, uh, November, or in October twenty-twenty-one. And last but not least, Flint Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Sherry Zeller has expressed an interest in serving the, on that committee, and to request, requested that we consider appointing her to a three-year term, which would expire in January twenty-twenty-three. Anybody have any issues with those? No? Uh, staff, anything else, Eric?
Jesse Howell, the city engineer, on Friday, took over some options to, uh, complete the, your trail connection, uh, Mason Road to Crapo Park, uh, looking at timing with, uh, Summer Street, uh, so wanted to put in an application for a TAP grant, um, uh, same deadline as the STBG, uh, for the portion, um, southern part of town, connecting Crapo over to Fourteenth Street. Uh, funds, uh, for this, uh, can be expended right away, uh, starting October twenty-first, but, or October twenty-twenty-one, but, uh, it can be, uh, extended out through September twenty-twenty-five as well. Uh, we do need a twenty percent match, um, talked to Jim, that's something I did put in the budget, or requested in the budget, um, so we would need a resolution, uh, considering approval of this at the meeting on Monday. Um, I think on that timeframe, uh, looked like it potentially could work, but, uh, something we could move out as well and have more discussion on, so, that's something I'll add to the meeting and then have more discussion on Monday.
Okay, sounds good.
Is that going to cut between the, the church and?
That's right, you can see it, Robert.
Right now, it's proposing between the church and Parkside, yeah.
Cool. Don, anything? Thank you, Don, Nick? You gonna throw a pin at us?